Okay, a couple of things I want to share with you. Each week what we're gonna do, we'll start at 6:30, we will start in here as a large group, and we'll watch the video together, and then we're gonna break off into different areas of the church to do small groups. Hopefully, we're gonna try to, you can go to whatever group you want, and I'm gonna have the leaders stand up, just so you can see who they are in just a second, because some of you may know them, maybe you don't. Some of you are in life groups already, others of you are not, that's okay. You can go to whatever group you want. I think the way it's gonna work is we're gonna have a small group in here, in the study, in the pastor's study over here, I think there's enough for eight people there, and I think there's eight or 10 people we can put in the prayer room, which is right over here. We can have a larger group right back there, maybe, you know, 12 to 14, and we can have another group of 10 or 12 right in here, and then we'll have a group in here. So, we should have plenty of room for everybody. Chumlins, would you wanna, guys wanna stand up? They're gonna have a group. Do you have a preference for a room? Which one, which one of these rooms you guys want? The Sunday School room right across? Okay, so that one's already set up in there? All right, so, when it comes time, if you wanna, if you wanna be in the Chumlins group, you can just follow them, they'll be going out that door. Stephens, where's Mark and Tina? There's Tina, Mark's back behind the board. Where you guys wanna be? Okay, we'll have the Stephens group, anybody who wants to be in the Stephens group, you can just join them right back there in the gathering area. Deb Hollinsby's group, I know Deb can't be here tonight, what, have you guys got a place where you wanna meet, or are you just gonna join another group? You're just gonna join another group? We'll take you, wherever you wanna be. And then, so, Bowman's right here, you guys wanna stand up just so they can see you? Where do you, where would you guys like to be? Either in the prayer room or right over here, which one would you rather have? Right over here. So if you wanna, when it comes time, Bowman's will be over there. Then my wife Lisa, Lisa, would you stand up and dance for everybody, please? This is my wife Lisa, we're gonna be doing a group in here. You can join whatever, whichever one of these groups you would prefer. I will let you know that if you, if you choose to stay in here, this one, we are live streaming, by the way, and this group in here will, will stay live streaming, just so, if that makes you uncomfortable, I don't know if it will or not, I hope, I hope it wouldn't, but if it, if that's a concern, just let you know. The rest of them, you can, there'll be more anonymity, but the one in here, we will be live streaming, so. Everyone should have picked up one of these participant guides, there's lots and lots of them back there, if you didn't, just grab one. It's broken up into six sections, tonight we're doing section one. There is also a companion book or a real book, this is just a participant's guide. Now how many of you have gotten the real book? Wow! And is the real book good? It is good, so, we only have the participant guides here at the church, if you want a real book, you've gotta go on, where did you get it, like Amazon or something? Yeah. So, really what it's gonna be is, I need one of you that has a real book to be in my group, so you can lead the group, okay? All right. All right, so, there's, ultimately, the study, you can do as much or as little to prepare for the study as you want, really. I mean, if you wanna, if you wanna dive real deep, get one of the books, and as I've heard, the book is awesome, and you can, how many chapters are in that book? Same number of chapters is on, in the participant guides, or is there more, like 12? Is there different? Totally different? Really? Oh, there's 21 chapters? Oh, really? Okay, yeah. So, ultimately, what we're gonna be doing, so, let's just say you're, you're like me, and you think, "I just don't have time to do a whole bunch of studying and reading, blah, blah, blah," and, so you can come to, and watch the video, and you can actually use the participant's guide, and just take some notes while you're watching the video, because you'll see there's some questions along with the video, or if you don't wanna do that, you don't have to do that either, because we're gonna have a good discussion afterwards, and most of it, because you've seen the video, you'll be able to participate in, so it's, you're good one way or the other. For as much as you wanna invest in it, or as little, you're gonna get something out of it, I promise you. Once we break up after the video, and we go into our various groups, we will, when we, when we did this in the fall, we had everybody come back, and we did kind of a final debriefing, we're not gonna do that with this many people tonight. Once we break off into our small groups, you'll just stay in your groups until you guys are done, so leaders, you'll conclude your group with prayer or whatever, and, so, if you happen to get into it, and you're not ready to leave, and everybody else is leaving, make sure you know where the lights are, so that you can lock up, okay? Because, we ain't like sticking around for you, stick around as long as you want, okay? One last thing. We are, our, this group will always be a week ahead of the sermons, so, basically what it's gonna be is, tonight's lesson is gonna be what I'm gonna be preaching on, on Sunday, all right? So that's how the rotation will work ultimately. That does not mean that you don't have to come to church on Sunday, okay? Because I knew that's what Lisa was thinking! Oh, is there anything I'm forgetting? Anybody else have any other questions or comments we wanna make before we watch the video? I was thinking there was one other thing I was supposed to say, but I don't remember what it was. Oh, if you need childcare, let me know. What I've heard is that a lot of the folks that need childcare aren't gonna be able to be here next week, so we weren't gonna have the kids, or the childcare team here, but if you need it, and you're gonna be here next week, let me know. Heather is available if we need her, okay? There will be class on spring break, but it may be a smaller group, like Lisa and I are gonna be visiting our daughter in San Diego. Uh, we're gonna be going to Alaska during spring break. So, there will be, for the next six weeks, there will be studies, but it may look different, just like your, a lot of your groups can't be here next week. It's okay, so if you, if you have people in your group that can't be here, say, "I've only got like, I'm the only one from my group that's can, can be here next week," that's okay, just come and, you know, join one of the other groups, it's no problem at all, okay? All right, just a real quick setup for the video this evening. As you can tell, the name of the study is "When the Game Is Over, It All Goes Back in the Box." Those of you that have been reading the book, you understand that already, I suspect, what that means, you'll have a lot better idea after the video this evening, but basically, tonight kinda sets the stage for the whole, the whole study, and ultimately, we're gonna be reminded this evening that a lot of the things that we have a tendency to think that life is really all about, life really isn't all about those things at all, and trying to figure out what life really is about can change your life. One of the things, I'm not gonna preach my sermon for you, but I want you to hear something I'm gonna say right now, is that I hate playing, playing board games, I just hate them. Lisa loves them, don't you?
I do, it's 'cause you don't wanna lose.
That's exactly right! And I determined, I, I was really kinda, got tired of losing all the time, and I thought, "Why do I lose these games to her all the time?" And, because I thought all these board games were just, they were just luck, right? Well, that's just not quite true. There's actually skill involved, as much as I hate to admit it. And understanding the goals and objectives of a board game is pretty important, if you actually wanna do it, play, play the game right, right? Well, guess what? Understanding the goals and objectives of life, understanding the real goals and objectives of life, is pretty important, if you expect to play the game of life well, too, okay? Mr. Mark, let's go ahead and start the video.
You know, life has a lot of different ways to teach us about what matters the most, and I wanna tell you about one of my favorite ways. I am standing on the world's largest Monopoly board. It's located in downtown San Jose, just a few miles away from where I live, and it's not just a decoration, this actually is a playable Monopoly board. I haven't played much Monopoly in recent years, but I used to play a lot when I was growing up, and if we'll let it, Monopoly has something profound to teach us about life's most important lesson. I learned it from my grandmother, because my grandmother taught me how to play the game. Let me tell you about my grandmother. My grandmother lived with us when I was growing up as a kid, and she was a wonderful person. She used to tell great ghost stories, she was a great cook, she would make banana bread and this dessert called red velvet cake, it's mostly butter. She would pop popcorn on Friday nights in bacon grease, and then put the bacon bits in the popcorn, it was fabulous. Nobody in my grandmother's family lived to be too old, but we loved my grandmother. She was a wonderful person, but she was the most ruthless Monopoly player I have ever known. Imagine what would've happened if Vince Lombardi had married Lady Macbeth, maybe, and they had a kid, and you'll get some sense of the way that my grandmother played Monopoly. When the game would start, I would get my $1,500, and I'd wanna hold on to it, but my grandmother understood that acquisition is necessary to win, that money is how you keep score. And so eventually, inevitably, my grandmother would become master of the board, buy every piece of property she landed on, mortgage that, and acquire everything else. And I would always land on her property once too often, and I would have to give her my last dollar and quit in utter defeat. And then she would say to me, "Don't worry about it, Johnny, one day you'll learn how to play the game." And I always hated it when she would say that. And then one summer, I was about 10 years old, and I played with a neighborhood kid, and I learned that summer how to play the game, it gradually dawned on me, money's how you keep score, you gotta acquire everything you can. And by the time that fall rolled around, and I was gonna play my grandmother again, I was more ruthless than she was. I was ready to bend the rules if I had to, to beat my grandmother. I played her with sweaty palms. Relentlessly, inexorably, I drove her off the board. Slowly, with great cunning and skill, I exposed the soft underbelly of my grandmother's vulnerability. I can still remember, it happened at Marvin Gardens, and I looked at my grandmother, she was an old lady by now, she was a widow by the time I knew her well. She had raised six children, she raised my mom, she loved my mom, she loved me. And I took everything she had, I destroyed her financially and psychologically. I beat my grandmother and watched her give me her last dollar and quit in utter defeat. And then, I had one more lesson to learn, because the great lesson always comes at the end of the game. And I first heard this from James Dobson, who talked about a time when he learned to play Monopoly with his family. The great lesson at the end of the game is this, when the game is over, it all goes back in the box. All that money, all that property, all those houses, all those hotels, boardwalk and park place, everything, when the game is over, goes back in the box. I didn't want everything to go back in the box, I wanted to leave everything out as a kind of perpetual memorial to my great skill. This is the great lesson of life. When the game is over, all the stuff goes back in the box. And so, you have to ask yourself, "How should I play the game in light of this one great truth?" The Psalmist says in Psalm 90, "Teach us to number our days aright, so that we can gain a heart of wisdom." It's a funny thing, almost everybody I know has really good intentions in life. People wanna know God well, they wanna do good work, they wanna develop good character, they wanna have great relationships, they wanna be really good parents, and yet we find ourselves drifting into another mode. When Nancy and I had two children, and they were real small, we were on a plane one time, doing a long cross-country flight, we'd taken over the back row of the plane, nobody else wanted to be near us, 'cause it didn't look good, it didn't smell good, it was littered with dirty diapers and crayons and crackers and crumbs. You know you're in trouble when the flight attendant says, "Would you mind if your kids played outside?" And we were wondering, "Why did we bring these kids with us on this trip? Why did we have these kids in the first place?" And then a guy, a couple rows in front of us, turned around and surveyed the damage, and he looked at me and he said, "Are those your two kids?" And I thought about it, and I said, "Yes, they are." And he said, "My wife and I would give anything in the world to have two kids." I said, "You don't have any kids?" He said, "No, we have five kids, we'd give anything in the world to have two kids." It's part of the human condition, we have all these dreams for the kind of people we wanna be, the kind of lives we wanna live, the kind of work we wanna do, the kind of families we'd like to raise, and yet we find our lives getting away from us, we do not number our days aright, we forget the one great lesson. And so God calls us back to it over and over again. In Jerusalem, Jewish people from all over the world would come, over the years, and build synagogues, and there's one synagogue there that has a coffin that's built into the wall, and when people ask why it is there, they are told that in the Talmud we are taught that each human being is to repent one day before they die, the day before the last day of their life. And everybody will ask, "Well, how do I know what's gonna be the day before I die?" And then they're told, "We are to live every day as if it is the day before our last day. We are to live every day in light of the great truth, that it's all going back in the box, and so I must arrange my life around what matters most." And I know so many wonderful people who have such good dreams, but they just drift into living their lives around things that are only temporal, things that cannot bring satisfaction, things that do not really matter to God. My grandmother, in many ways, lived a pretty simple life. She raised six children, three boys first, Hack, Jack, and Mack, believe it or not, and then three girls, including my mom. She never traveled a great deal, she never wrote a book, she never had a job outside the home I know of, except working at a little bakery in Rockford, Illinois, but none of that mattered much to her, because she understood what was temporal and what's eternal. She understood what matters a lot and what's not so important. She remembered this one great lesson, that when the game is over, everything is going back in the box, and that's the lesson that some of the smartest people in the world forget. There was a man named Jesus who told one of his most unforgettable stories about just such a smart guy, but that one, I wanna tell you about someplace else. Jesus told a story, I'll give it to you in modern terms, of a busy guy, he was committed to success, whatever success took, and it took everything. He'd work 12 or 14 hours a day, joined boards of directors to be able to meet people who could help him climb the ladder. His wife would nag him sometimes about his family, he knew the kids were growing up, and he was kinda missing it. From time to time, they would complain about games they weren't playing, or lunches they weren't eating together, but after a while, they stopped complaining, 'cause they stopped expecting it would ever be any different. Bring his briefcase home from work every night, and there's trouble to his son. Son finally asked him, "Dad, how come every day you come home, you always bring your briefcase?" And his dad said, "Well, son, it's 'cause I can't get all my work done at the office." And his son said, "Dad, couldn't they put you in a slower group?" But he was not big on the slower group deal. One night he went to bed, about 1 o'clock in the morning, he woke up, and he felt a twinge in his chest, and his wife made an appointment for him to see the doctors, they told him that he had all the classic symptoms, high blood pressure, elevated cholesterol, and he would need to make some significant changes in his lifestyle. For a little while he did, but after his symptoms went away, his motivation to change went away also. He would often say to himself, "This man, there'll be plenty of time to be with my kids, there'll be plenty of time to enjoy my family, there'll be plenty of time to take care of my body, in six months or so, when things settle down." And although he was a very bright guy, this man in Jesus' story, he never seemed to notice that things never actually settled down. He knew his life was kinda out of balance, there was a church down the street from them, and his wife would talk to him sometimes about being involved there, but Sunday morning seemed like it was the only time he could crash. Besides, he said, "There'll be plenty of time for God in six months or so, when things settle down." And then one day, a remarkable thing happened in the life of this man in Jesus' story. The COO of his company came to him and said, "You know, you're not gonna believe this, but we're on the brink of an economic miracle. We got orders coming in so fast, our supply can't even keep up with demand, and if we catch this wave, we'll be set for life, this is it, this is the dream. But we got headaches too, we got inventory problems, and our software is outdated, and if we don't make some changes around here, we could be in trouble." Now from that moment on, this man in Jesus' story is like a man possessed. Every waking moment is devoted to this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and then it hits him, he could reorganize everything, he could tear down all of the old structures of his company and put up newer, bigger structures, he could put his company through a technological revolution, and they could go wireless and paperless. And he went home that night, and he said to his wife, "You know what this means, don't you? When I have finished this project, I will have climbed the ladder to the top rung, I will have achieved the dream, financial security, we can finally relax." She'd heard that kind of talk before, so she didn't get too excited. She went up to bed at 11 o'clock, she asked him, "You wanna come on up with me?" And he said, "No, I'll be there in a couple of minutes, I wanna get a little more work done on my computer, you go ahead." About 3 o'clock in the morning, she woke up, and his side of the bed was still empty. So, she went downstairs to bring him up, his head was resting on his arm in front of his computer terminal, and she went to touch him on the shoulder to bring him to bed, but his skin was cold when she touched it, and he did not respond to her voice. She got a panicky feeling in the pit of her stomach, she called 911, but by the time the paramedics got there, they told her that he'd had a massive heart attack and had been dead for hours. His death was a major story in the financial community, and because of his prominence, he was written up in The Wall Street Journal and Forbes, and it's too bad he was dead, 'cause he would've loved to have read what they wrote about him. And then they had a memorial service, and again, because of his prominence, the whole community turned out. They all filed past his casket, and they all said the same stupid thing that people always say at funerals when they view the body. "He looks so peaceful." Now rigor mortis will kinda do that to you. And then people got up to eulogize him at the service that they had. One of them said, "He was a visionary, he was an entrepreneur, he was a leader." Somebody else noted all of his technological innovations, they said, "He was a developer of new delivery systems, he was creative." And then somebody else got up and said, "You know, nobody ever caught him cheating on his expense account, or his taxes, or his wife, he was a straight arrow guy." Somebody else got up and said, "He was kind of a pillar in the community, he knew everybody, he was a networker." And because of his prominence, they erected a memorial to this guy, this busy, admired, wealthy, successful, family neglecting, God ignoring life. And they wrote on that marker, all of these fabulous words, "leader, visionary, innovator, networker." And at the top of the marker, they wrote the big word, the word that this man and many other people in our world will sell their soul for, "success." And when it was night, and everybody had gone home, unseen, unheard, the angel of God came to the cemetery and made its way to this memorial, and traced with a single finger the one word that God chose to summarize this man's life, "fool." "You fool," God says to this man, "this night your soul will be required of you." It's a fascinating detail in Jesus' story, when he uses that language, "will be required," it was taken from the financial arena in his day, and Jesus is saying, "Nothing you got, not the beat of your heart, not your own soul, really belongs to you, it belongs to God, and one day will come due." Now, who's gonna get all of those things you stored up for yourself? He was a really bright guy, the man in Jesus' story. He learned to play the game, played it really well, he just forgot this one detail, that sooner or later the game would end, the game always ends, and that when the game is over, all the stuff goes back in the box. And then Jesus closes his story with one unforgettable sentence, "So it is," he says, "for every human being who stores up things for themselves but are not rich toward God." Now, the sobering news is, I don't know, and you don't either, that you can ever become rich in the stuff of this world, doesn't really matter, because when the game's over, it's all gonna end up in the same place. But the good news is, it is possible for you, for me, for anybody, to be rich toward God, to be rich in the eyes of God, and this is not a complex deal. Jesus spells this out quite clearly as well, he says, "It's all about two things, loving God, loving God with all your heart, soul, mind, and strength, and then loving people, loving your neighbor as you love yourself." To love God means that I come to enjoy Him, to worship Him, to serve Him, to delight in Him, to be with Him, 'cause when you love somebody, the primary way that gets expressed is in the desire to be with one another. And I can do that with God in quite simple ways, when I wake up in the morning, I can just whisper a prayer, "God, would you be with me, would you walk with me through this day, whatever happens?" When I sit down to have breakfast in the morning, I can remember that just as the food is nourishing my body, so the presence of God with me can nourish my soul, my spirit, all through the day. When I drive my car, I can do that remembering that Jesus is right there with me, maybe a little scared in the car. When I go to work, when I am with friends, all through the day, I can remember, I can invite, every moment is an opportunity to be with Jesus, and to learn from Jesus how to be like Jesus. And then fundamental to loving God is loving the people who mean so much to Him that He puts in my life, and each moment is just a sacred opportunity to do that. I'm very aware of that right now, because on the day that we're filming this, tomorrow, my wife and I will take our youngest child, our son, to college, and it seems to me like the years have gone so fast. Nancy was at the grocery store the week after our second daughter went off to college, and it kinda hit her by surprise. Nancy was getting potatoes for a meal we'd have later on that week, and what struck her was, she only got three potatoes. So she thought, "We used to be a five potato family," and then one of our potatoes went away, and then another one went away to college, and now we're down to three potatoes. And she got so choked up, she started to cry in the vegetable department of the supermarket. So then she went, got a packet of Hostess Ho-Hos, ate them, and felt much better after that. But the reality is, we get those potatoes, we get those people in our lives for such a brief window. The Psalmist said, "Teach us to number our days aright, so that we gain a heart of wisdom." And if we do, if you love God, if you love the people that He puts in your life, you and I can be rich toward God, which is the only kind of richness that counts, 'cause all the other kinds, they're gonna end up here, they're going back in the box.
We'll take a second to just go around, just introduce yourself, say whatever you'd like to say, Lisa, you wanna start?
I'm Lisa.
Hi, that's Lisa.
I'm Shannon.
Will.
Sheila.
Lois.
I'm Will.
I'm Lyle.
Rod.
And what's your name, lady?
Pat.
My name's Craig. There will be a test afterward, so just be ready, just kidding. Let's, Lisa, you wanna start with it first?
Sure. Father, I thank you for this day and for this night, Lord, I've been anticipating it for a while now, I think that this is such an awesome I think that this is such an awesome opportunity, Lord, for us to, um, to learn a different facet, Lord, that you have for us in our walk with you. Father, I thank you for the excitement of having lots of people here tonight, all talking about and thinking about you, Lord, and what it is that you have for us. I pray that our, uh, our words would be pleasing to you, our discussions would be pleasing to you, Lord, and be with us, Lord, as we start our, the beginning of our study, Lord.
Amen. You wanna open up your book? Um, I'm not gonna hit every one of the questions that's in the study guide, by the way. And those of you that have been reading the other book, if there are things that, that you read in any of the things that you've been doing that you think are good, please jump in, share them. My purpose here is really just to facilitate the discussion. I don't wanna dominate the discussion. So just think about it that way. So if you have things you wanna share, please just jump in.
Craig, he did follow the book pretty closely.
Did he really?
Yes, he did.
Okay. I mean...
It was like you were...
Almost, yeah, almost.
Oh, really? So you've been reading the book too?
I listened to the whole thing.
Oh, did you?
Awesome. Got it.
What's the name of this book you're talking about?
Just like that.
There's a textbook that goes with it.
When the game is over, there's actually a, this is a participants' guide and then there's actually a book that he wrote.
That's got the same name?
It's got the same name, that's correct. Yeah, yeah. He starts out on page, if you look on page eight, he says, and this is basically the introduction of it, he says, "Imagine for a moment that life is a game." Does that bother you, by the way, to think that? Does it feel like it's trivializing life to think of it as a game?
Maybe a little.
How come? That did me too, but what way to bother you?
Well, it's just not that simple, I guess.
How about the rest of you?
When you, when you compare it to a game like Monopoly. It's close.
You know what? There's, there's a lot of truth in that, isn't there? Especially the way a lot of people choose to live life, right? Yeah. One of the things that bothers me about thinking of li, and I know what he's trying to do. He's just using this as an analogy, I get that. But I'm, it almost feels like we are trivializing life by thinking of it as a game rather than as life. Um, but I think it's important to get beyond that because he's really, he really is just trying to take us on a journey and help us to grow. So maybe nobody else has a problem with it too much, but... So imagine, he says here, that life is a game and if, and every game that you play has a goal and an objective, right? If you wanna win the game in particular. So what then, do, how would then would you describe the goal or the objective of this game called life?
I wrote down, "To have eternal life in heaven."
I think he summed it up there at the end when he said, "Love God and love your neighbor."
Amen. Those are all good biblical answers and they're the right answers. Now, what are the answers that most of us actually live according to?
World's standards.
And which are what?
Money, success. Feeling happy.
Thinking the feelings are...
Feelings.
Or...
It's all about happiness.
Yeah, it's all about feelings, yep.
What I got when I was listening to it, just from him talking and also watching the video also, is each time when he said that he went away, played with his friend and then came back and played Monopoly with his grandmother and he showed her vulnerable underbelly and all that.
That made me a little uncomfortable. I don't know if...
Grandma's underbelly.
But at the end of it, he says, and he took all of her money and like, basically crushed her. Took all of her finances, took everything. And the whole time I was hearing that, I was thinking that he immediately noticed that that wasn't the best thing to do because grandma always want, that was her game, that was her skill, that was her thing. And he took that from her now.
Yeah.
So instead of wanting all of the money and all of the things that go back in the box, he should have kept that relationship. He should have had that intact.
By the way, you just put your finger on probably the answer. I mean, we had, we had two very biblical answers, right? Love your, love God and love your neighbor and eternity in heaven. Those are the biblical answers, absolutely true. The theological answer is the goal and the objective of life is relationship. And it kind of goes back to what you were saying, Ron. I mean, that's what the golden rule is. Relationship with God first, but then relationships with your grandma, with your children, with your, your neighbor. And we oftentimes don't live our lives with that as our priorities. We just don't.
And I think that, that those goals and objectives may change through life as your, as your spirituality develops and you become more mature with that. You, you begin to realize that all that stuff that's gonna go back in the box doesn't really matter. It's the stuff that you, it's the relationships that you've built with people around you and the, um, that's, that's, that's what's the most important thing in life. Because when you're gone, hopefully they'll remember you and find those memories to be treasured memories. Memories of love and caring and, and nurturing and, yeah, I just...
Now, you said something that I found very interesting, by the way. You said that as you grow and mature, the goals and the objectives of life change. Have you ever tried to play a board game by your own rules? Have you? And then have you ever played, tried to play a board game when everybody that is playing the game plays by their own rules? Doesn't work, does it? See, so really, you're exactly right, Pat, that we, as we grow, our goals and objectives change. But the goals and objectives don't ever change.
No.
We may try to play the game by other goals and objectives, but every time we do that, it ends up in a mess. Um, this is the truth. You try to play the game, life, by, with your own goals and objectives, it will take you no time at all to discover, "I have made a mess out of this." And here's the good, here's, here's the good news and the bad news, the double-edged sword. God loves you enough to let you. But the best news is that He is always saying, "Come on back."
I'm here.
"My, I am here. My grace and my mercy belongs to you." Not because you deserve it, but because I want more than anything else to be in relationship with you. Right? That's the good news. So the most important secret to learn in order to play the game of life is what? Relationship is the most important thing. Primarily your relationship with God and your relationship with others. Have you ever heard the old story about, um, the, uh, the person laying on their deathbed who said, "Man, I wish I had spent more time at work"? Ever heard that story?
No.
I've never heard that story either. I've never heard, I've spent, I've spent a lot of time at a lot of deathbeds, so haven't you?
Yes.
Pat works at the hospital and I've never once, ever heard anybody say, "Man, I wish I had spent more time at work." But it's not unusual at all to say, "I wish I had spent more time with my family." "I wish I had spent more time on my relationship with God." Okay, turn, let's turn to page nine. Right at the very bottom, we're gonna start the DVD discussion. "What is the greatest lesson of life that John learned through Monopoly?" What was it?
"All goes back in the box."
"It all goes back in the box." That's right. That's what you learn from Monop, from the game, right, is that, which basically means what, Phil? What does it, what is he trying to say when he says, "It all goes back in the box"?
Uh, if that's what you're focused on, is money, wealth, power, success, all those types of things, at the end of the day, you're not gonna be able to take any of those with you. Right?
Right. It's going back in the box whether you like it or not, right? And those things are not eternal. So what is eternal? Relationships, we already talked about that, especially the relationship with God. What else is eternal? Because this is part of what we're gonna be talking about tonight as we get deeper into the scripture. What, can you think of some other things that are eternal?
Love.
Love.
Relationship with Christ.
So I got a story. I went to a church where the friend of mine was.
Yeah.
And the sermon, it really had an impact on me because the minister told this story about building this motorcycle with his grandfather and how much fun that was because they both had that same interest.
Yeah.
And to make a long story short, at the end of the sermon, he showed a picture of the motorcycle. But then he talked about what the most important thing was in doing that. It was the time he spent with his grandfather.
Amen. Yep, relationships, right? Investment in relationships. Now, is all that to say that success and things and money, is that bad?
No.
No. It's just what your reason is. I mean, God can bless you and provide you with a job and provides you with a, a good income, so you can afford things. But you're still leaning on God for your strength to get through your day.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the stuff, it's, God, God wants you to have nice things. I really believe that. I mean, I, I don't think that things are the issue at all. I think if things enhance what makes you really rich, and if things are getting in the way of what really makes you rich, then get rid of your things, right?
I'll, I'll be honest, Craig, I've come across, um, a lot of verses lately when I've been reading where Jesus says, "Sell everything and follow Me" and it's, it has troubled me, you know? I mean, we have plenty, we have plenty. And it's not that we don't give, we do, but sometimes I think, and even in the last 20 years, I've had guilt. Well, really, is He telling me that I'm basically supposed to just have enough to get by and give away everything, you know? This is something in my Christian life that has gnawed at my heart sometimes. How much is too much? I mean, you know, we take vacations and we have, um, what I would consider to be, you know, maybe more than most, and I have, I do have times of guilt about that. And it's not that I think that we're supposed to be poor, but He does say over and over and over again, "Sell everything you have and give it to others," you know? And I struggle with that.
I think that's the message that Bridget shared with us Sunday because you asked her how about herself.
I was just thinking about that.
And she said, "We're getting by."
Yeah.
And yet look at what they're giving.
But is the stuff interfering with your relationship with Christ? Is it interfering with the relationship in your family? Then is it wrong? You know what I'm saying? If stuff is getting in the way of your, your loving relationship with Christ or if it's getting in the way like the man who worked all those hours, if it's getting in the way of, of interfering with the relationships of the people that you love, then it's a problem. Then it's a real problem. And that's maybe when you need to get rid of stuff. But if it's not interfering, I, I think God is blessing you with the stuff that you have so you can enjoy it with your family, you know? Because you already have them off to college and gone. I think you need to, because you're able to, to be able to have that income so that you can enjoy life and make those memories with the kids.
And I think if you look at, if, and I haven't, I don't, I don't know all the scriptures you're talking about, Shannon, but I can think of one, "The rich are ruled," where Jesus says to go and sell everything and come follow Me and he turns and walks away, right, because he's rich.
And he thinks, "Well, that's a lot of stuff. You're asking me to get it."
So really, the question, if you, if you look at that passage of scripture, what, if you boil it down, what he's really saying, he's really asking the question, does your, it's, does your stuff have you? Could you walk away? I've always wondered, and you never, how do you know that, how do you know the answer until you've actually done, right? Until you've actually been put in a position where God says, "All right, what are you gonna do? You gonna walk away or not?" Honestly, I, I had major doubts if I would ever do that. I'm just being honest. And many of you know my story and I'm not gonna go into detail, but there was, there came a day in my life when God said, "Walk away from it." And I, the first, I didn't even, I was like, it was like, "Rich are ruled." And I have to tell you, and I'm not saying this to be proud or anything, I'm just telling, I'm saying this to you to, because it was a, it was an opportunity to live a Bible story. Because when, when Lisa and I, because I remember setting us, setting out on our beautiful back deck, right? And thinking, "Well, are we gonna do this or not?" And she looked at me and I looked at her and she said, "Well, heck yes, we're gonna do this." And did we look back once? Never, not once.
That's not to say it wasn't scary sometimes.
I'm not telling you I wasn't scared sometimes, but I never, I never looked back once because I knew that I was following Jesus. If I was just, if I was walking away because I was mad or because, you know, whatever, fill in the blank, then there'd be a whole lot of reasons to think, "Oh, my gosh, you were the stupidest human being to, to ever live." But it was Jesus that said, "Walk away from it and come follow Me." See, that's the difference. Who has, who has what? Does your stuff have you or does Jesus have you? The stuff is not the problem. It's, it's the priorities. And if you can walk away from your stuff, you know, a very simple story, I remember, I, I think I've told you all before that I'm kind of a car guy and, and to say that makes it sound like I'm kind of like this gearhead. I don't, I couldn't fix a car if my life depended on it. I like to buy cars, okay?
And Jeeps?
And Jeeps, and trucks, and motorcycles. I, I just love that kind of stuff. I, there was a day in my life, I was, I was, I don't remember. I mean, I had traded cars so often that a good friend of mine says, "Dude, you're gonna have to get a dealer's license because you can only own seven cars in a year and then you have to..." See that I know that, it's scary, right? And he looked at me one day and he said, he said, "Uh, you got a problem?" And I said, "No, I tried." And he goes, he said, "Well, prove it to me then." And he said, "What do you want me to do?" And he goes, he said, "At the time I was driving this really sweet, it was a Bonneville SSEI." I don't know if you've ever seen those cars, but it was an awesome car. It had one of those projection things on the windshield or, anyway. And he said, he said, "Why don't you sell that car and go buy a junker?"
His wife was really excited about it.
Oh, my gosh! Elizabeth, my daughter, was about 14 at the time.
Yes.
I bought a, it was like a 1973, I don't know, it wasn't, I don't know what year it was, but it was like, it was a Ford Escort. They literally, we lived in Davenport at the time, and have you ever been on some of those roads in Davenport? Goes straight up like, this thing could barely make it up the hill. And Elizabeth was ashamed to be, to ride with me because it... Now, did I need to do that? I think I actually did. You don't wanna know why? I think I kind of did because I needed to know that my, my cars didn't have me, that I could walk away from them if I had to, if I chose to. But there's, there's nothing wrong with having a nice car, everybody. That's not the point. Unless your nice cars have you. You see what my point is? Yeah. What are you gonna say there, Lisa?
I'm not gonna say a word.
I hate it when God tries to teach you lessons. And I have some consequences.
And I have some consequences.
On the bottom of page 10, it says, "Which of your personal experiences or observations of other people and their experiences stand out in your mind as reminders of truth that everything goes back in the box?" Does anybody have a story that they, that they can, that that brings to mind?
It brings to mind our neighbors. They are in a nursing home. And she says, "But I can't give up my stuff."
And they're in pretty bad shape, aren't they? They can't take care of themselves, can they?
No, she expects him to take care of her, and he's in the end stages of Parkinson's disease. His cognitive skills are real low. And they were in a rehab center for two and a half months. And came home two weeks ago Wednesday, about 2:30 in the afternoon. By 4:30 the next morning, I heard her screaming and crying, but that was kind of the norm because that's always what she did. And so I didn't pay a lot of attention to it until 8 o'clock when I heard her again in the morning and thought, "Hmm, better do something." They both went by ambulance to the hospital because he'd come in and taken her walker away from her in the bathroom just because. And she screamed and cried and got hollered. And finally, he came back in without the walker and fell, struck his head, suffered a concussion, and passed out on top of her, and there they laid for four hours before anybody found her. So, yeah.
All because she couldn't get rid of her stuff?
She can't. She just, we've had this discussion, she and I, so many times, and I keep telling her, "Gather, you're not going to take it with you. When you die, all of this stuff is going to be right here. And whatever's going to happen to it, you're not going to have to say so," you know? Yeah, sad.
Anybody else have a story? Because if you don't, you should be careful because you've got to believe I'll have one.
I could go a different direction with it.
Yeah.
All the famous people that get fame and get wealth and they're blessed with all these things, or seem to be. And they have all this money and all this fame and all these new cars, new, new everything. New big house, living in Malibu, get to go travel the world, do whatever they want to do, but they didn't ever develop a relationship within themselves or God. And they're still so
Miserable.
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 And they either end up taking their life or just turn into drugs or alcohol or any of the other substances. And it's just, that in itself is just shining a light on still being alive, if they are still alive, that it all goes back in the box.
That's right.
Because it doesn't matter what it is.
It's because they're living by a different set of rules to the game of life, right? They think, that's, how many, how many lottery winners have you ever heard of that after they won the lottery, their life was perfect after that? Very few, yeah? Most of the time you hear, "Oh, my gosh, it just destroyed my life." Because they thought that it would solve all their problems when their problems didn't have anything really to do with money. Yeah, that's good. I remember once, when Simon was a little boy, Simon's my son, and you guys remember when they, I don't know, do they still do Take Your Kid to Work Day? Do they still do that?
Not during COVID.
One day, I don't know how old he was, he was in grade school. They were having Take Your Kid to Work Day. And he wanted to come with me to work. And I said, I said, we call him Josh, and I said, "Josh, I said, "Why would you want to come with me to church? You're at church all the time." I said, "Just..." I said, "I think it would be a waste of your day. It'd be probably smarter for you just to go, go to school. You'd get more out of that than you would coming and hanging out with me at church." And he didn't say anything. And I thought that the subject was over, and I was about to walk away. And he just fell on the floor and just started sobbing. And which, I thought, "What in the world is going on?" So I, I said, "What? Sit up here, let's talk, let's, what's going on?" And "Is it really that big a deal that you come to see what I do? You know what I do. You see what I do all the time. You live it." And he looked at me, you know, in this, the wisdom of an eight-year-old, wherever it was, it was. And he, and he said, he said, "I just wanted to be with you." And I just, then I started sobbing because I try my best. I mean, I know the right answers to this stuff, but that doesn't mean I've lived it.
Well, at that point in our lives, church was taking you away from us so much that we didn't even have you.
Yeah.
That was kind of what, this is kind of, now that I started talking, I'm kind of wishing I didn't. Do you remember the, when the, we were at that, one of our first churches, and you were one of the associates, and the senior pastor insisted that not only himself, but all of the other associates be at church that day on Mother's Day. I can't even remember what it was for, fundraising or something?
Yeah, they were getting ready to do a building campaign, and they wanted us all there to do.
Yeah.
Home cult.
Yeah. You said, "No, I'm not going to do that. I have plans to be, I have plans to be with my mother and honor her today." Got into some big, bad trouble about it, but just the whole relationship thing, you know? Even in church.
Yeah, just because, I'm sure you all have assumed that church is perfect, right? Yeah, right. It's not. Jesus is perfect.
That's right. We have some friends that have quite a bit of money. And for her, everything is about the label, everything. The car, the boots, the earrings, the coats, the coats after coats after, and everything. There's so much money, and there's all this. But it, it just, it shocks me how I see that it's so empty. And that you can tell that that's kind of what she lives for. And I see it, and I see the sadness behind it. And, but it's kind of all they have. They don't, they don't really have a relationship with God. And I see them trying to fill that void, and fill that void, and fill that void, and it's, there's never enough money. There's never enough pretty clothes, and there's never enough trips, and there's never enough beautiful vehicles to drive. And it, sometimes it just kind of makes me sad. I just sit there and go, "Wow." Like, "I really want to talk to you about something deep," you know? And I do not care where your boots come from or whatever, you know?
Let's look at page, top of page 11. "How would you define what it means to be rich towards God?" Because that's basically what we're talking about here, so what, let's define it, let's get practical.
Well, to be a servant. I think servanthood makes a big difference. If you, if you are rich towards God, then you have that desire to do what it is He wants you to do. I think it's, it allows you to, to see the goodness in other people and to reach out and come love with, you know, caring and compassion and recognizing that, you know, our world isn't perfect, but in each of us, we are made in the image of God, and we need to, to express that from ourselves to others so they can hopefully realize there is a God. And then to recognize it in others as well. And accept them where they are, not what you expect them to be. Because I think a lot of us like to choose friends that we're comfortable with, but that doesn't always work, you know? That's, you can be so, so totally, and I've shared with you before, students that I had at school that I absolutely did not think they had a thin chance to be successful in the career that they had chosen in nursing. And they both turned out to be absolutely two of the best students that I'd ever had, just of my first impression with the dreadlocks and the cat eye cataracts and the chains hanging down and the, the, what was the, the hairs? I mean, it was just, yeah, it was awful. I mean, the first time he walked up to me, I nearly passed out. I was almost afraid, you know what I'm saying?
All that goes back in the box.
But, but, you know, after a while, we developed a bond and, and I, it didn't take long for the cataracts or the contacts to come out and the chain to be gone. The tattoos were covered. And all of a sudden, he just blossomed. And he was one of the best students, and then his brother died while he was in his second or third year, second year of school, I guess it was. And I sent him a sympathy card because, you know, it was just one of those things that you did. And he was so appreciative of that. But he's gone on to be just an awesome nurse, you know? I would have never given him a nickel's chance to be successful. So that was when I learned, I have to stop making judgments, you know? Because sometimes
All goes back in the box.
You're right, it does.
You, you put your finger on one of the big ones of what it means to be rich, serving others. That sounds counterintuitive, doesn't it? To think that serving others makes you rich towards God, but it doesn't. Bridget setting up here, that woman is filled with the Spirit and filled with purpose and filled with joy and contentment.
And that's what comes from that relationship.
Yeah, amen. Yeah. Yeah. Being rich towards God, and by the way, if you, if you looked ahead at all, you could see this. And I'd be interested to know what he said in the, in the larger book, but he kind of outlined some of those things, what it means to be rich towards God on page 21 there. And that's a pretty good list, I think. Being rich, go ahead.
I think it's being grateful for everything, including your heartbeat and your breath.
Oh, yeah.
Every day.
Yeah. Just living a life of gratitude, you're right.
Down to the very last, the very first and last thing that you have.
How many of us just go through life just taking for granted all those things? Like breath or life. An attitude of gratitude sounds trite, but man, it's a good one. That's, that's being rich towards God, right?
Get up in the morning, thank you, God, start another day.
Amen, amen. Even when you don't feel it, by the way. Because there's a lot of days you get, I mean, that goes back to what Shannon was saying, is that if you're living for, faith is not a feeling, by the way. Have you ever, if you haven't, if you haven't made that distinction, you need to. There's nothing wrong with having warm fuzzies. I hope that when you come to worship on Sunday, or when you sing a worship song, I hope you're having warm fuzzies. I really do. But if you fall into the trap of believing that somehow that richness towards God means I have warm, I have a warm fuzzy, you're missing, you're missing out. Because there will be more depth and more beauty that comes from the day you get up and are grateful to God, and you feel like crap, right? "And I'm depressed today, and I don't want to get up, and I don't want to face this." But you say, "Thank you, Jesus." I choose to say, "Thank you, Jesus." I choose to have an attitude of gratitude. It's not easy, by the way. But that's, that's part of being rich towards God. Is anybody got their Bibles with them, right, Andy? Ron, do you want to read Luke, that story that he was talking about tonight? Luke chapter 12, verses 13 through 21. You can read that story, please. This is the story that he preached on in the cemetery, by the way. And it's the story, but you would never catch a thing, by the way, he told, but it is the story.
Well, he's looking that up, Craig.
Yeah.
I was just thinking here that the one thing about the video there was when he went to the cemetery and the large monument to somebody's life that he was standing in front of. But how important that seems to be to some people. And it even had the view, I think, of the angel. And it was all starting to look kind of like a lot of moss and pretty old. And like, you know, nice, but in the big scheme of things, that being there forever, what does that really mean?
Yeah. You got it?
Yeah, and what verses was it?
13 through 21.
Someone in the crowd said to him, "Teacher, tell my brother to divide the inheritance with me." Jesus replied, "Man who appointed me a judge or arbitrator between you." Then he said to them, "Watch out, be on your guard against all kinds of grief." Life does not consist in the abundance of possessions. And he told him this proverb, "The ground of a certain rich man yields an abundant harvest." He thought to himself, "What shall I do? I have no place to store my crops." Then he said, "This is what I'll do. I'll tear down my barns and build bigger ones. And there I will store my surplus grain. And I'll say to myself, 'You have plenty of grain laid up for many years. Take life easy, eat, drink, and be merry.'" But God said to him, "You fool. This very night, your life will be demanding from you. Then who will get what you have prepared for yourself? This is how it will be with whoever stores up things for themselves but is not rich toward God."
Right. Would you go, read on to verse 23.
Then Jesus said to his disciples, "Therefore I tell you, do not worry about your life, what you will eat, or about your body, what you will wear. For life is more than food, and body more than clothes."
Okay. I want you to think about those, those last few verses because there's, there's stuff in there. I'm not even sure we'll get around to talking about it, but I want you to think about those last few verses because that's part of that story. So what was the objective of the game called life that the two brothers that started the story? What was their, what was their objective of life?
The inheritance.
I want my stuff, right?
Now.
Yeah, I want my stuff and I want it now. Have you guys ever, have you ever noticed anybody that will allow their families to be torn apart over inheritance?
Lots of them. It's sad.
Because they believe the objective of life is to acquire more stuff. When we know that the Creator's objective of life is what will? Relationship. We would allow, there's so many of us, human beings, because we don't understand the objective of the game called life, that we would allow the most important objective to be destroyed for a false objective.
I think part of that is, for instance, in a state, it's not so much you need it, but somehow you think you need your share.
Yeah, I deserve it, right? That's, that's mine, I deserve this. So how does Jesus respond to the man's question when he says about his inheritance? What's he say to him?
"Who appointed me judge?"
Which is odd, isn't it? I mean, the truth of the matter is, he is the judge, right? Yeah, yeah. It was really, it was more of a rhetorical question than you'd think because he was really saying, "Who appointed, you know what? You're, you're right to come to me because I am the judge." But the guy didn't get it. And most people when they're reading this story don't get it either, is it how the irony in it, right? So was he, was, after reading that story, this kind of goes back to Shannon's point earlier, was Jesus saying in this story that it's wrong to have stuff?
I heard him say "but" in there.
Explain that, what do you mean?
It said something along the lines of, you can have all this stuff, but it shouldn't come in between you and God.
Right. Because guess what? There's going to come a day when it's all going back in the box.
You can have all of it as long as it doesn't come between you.
Right. Look at, if, if you got your Bibles, grab your phone or something, but look at verse 23, that last verse that Ron read, because this is, this is interesting to me. And I think it goes to the point we were just talking about. It's Luke, chapter 12, It says, "Life is more than food and the body is more than clothing." You see, when we make it about stuff, we think, life is about food. No, food is for your body. Food is to, and, well, life is about my Gucci bag, right? No, that's, what he's saying here is, there's nothing wrong with your Gucci bag. And there's nothing wrong with needing food. And if food is important, clothes are important. But what, what is he saying here? Life is, he should have capitalized every letter of the word "more." Life is more than that. It's not that those things are wrong, but life is more than that. Life is only meaningful when you live it in relationship. Life is mostly meaningful when you're able to live it out of the fundamental relationship you have with God. Have you guys ever heard of codependency? I bet you have, haven't you? See, here's, here's the problem, if we don't get this, 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 this relationship thing down. If we, if we think, if we mistakenly believe that life is about relationship, you're not going to get it right either. Life is more than just relationship. Life begins with relationship with God. And then, and then, if you have relationship with God, you are then free to have a healthy relationship with your wife. Because if it starts with the relationship that you have with what, your wife, then it can easily become codependency. Meaning, well, I can't be happy with her unless I'm with her, or, or I, I can't be fulfilled with, with, if some, you know, you can't fully be, even be in relationship with another person until you are fully in relationship with God. If you don't hear anything else tonight, hear that one, okay? If you're wondering why you're struggling with your human relationships, get, get your God relationship right first, and then your human relationships will, will come together. That doesn't mean your human relationships are going to be perfect, but you're going to have a whole lot better fulfilling, fulfillment in your human relationships when you get your God relationship first. That's, that's just simply the truth.
He's like your airplane oxygen mask.
Oh, excellent analogy. Put your mask on first and then get to take care of the baby, right? Because you're not going to be able to take care of the baby if you're not capable of breathing, right?
You're proud now, you can't be bothered.
Great one, excellent. That is excellent. Oddly enough, most people don't get that one. They don't. I know a lot of good Christians that don't get that. Turn to page 16. We're at the very top. It says, "Which perspective, the temporal or the eternal?" Temporal meaning the now, right? And eternal is, Ron, you got it. "Which perspective, the temporal or the eternal, has more influence in your everyday decision-making, has, has had more influence on your everyday decision-making in the past?" Anybody going to be honest?
Well, in my, in the past, I would say temporal, until I really developed that relationship with Christ, that I, I mean, I always knew God, I always loved God, but I wasn't in that loving relationship like I needed to be. So I think in my past, there was a time when I was temporary. And I was, you know, filled with objectives of good job, nice home, nice car, good kids, dressed well, that type of thing. So then all of a sudden, it's like, ooh, that's not good.
You have your, you have another birthday and you kind of go...
I have what?
You have another birthday and you kind of go, wait a minute.
Uh huh, yeah, right.
All that, yeah, we just talked about that.
I guess we were.
That's what I think is, can be so insidious about it, because we fall into that. We did that with our family growing up. I mean, it's just like grinding out each day. We've got to make enough money to pay the bills, we've got to make sure that our kids are fed, we've got to make sure that we're saving money for this, we've got to make sure that the car runs. And it's not just a, I've got to get this, I've got to have that, I've got to save for that. It's, it's like a day-to-day struggle to try to, to keep your head above water sometimes.
You know, I think a lot of times that when I see young patients in the hospital that are dying as a result of, more, more often than not, it's, it's a result of a traumatic accident or something, it hurts me so much to know that they will never mature to the point where they're going to realize the importance of God in their lives. That's, that really, that is, that is, I don't know how to describe it, but I, I, and I think that, that affects the, the staff in the emergency room as well. Because, you know, when somebody's really, really old, you, you have a different set of, of inner strength that, that works than you do when it's somebody that's, let's say, 20, 21, or whatever. And they've come in because the older person has developed that relationship with Christ and they pretty much know, you know, they've chosen to go where they want to go. You know, they've lived, they've lived their life according to what is important, if it's temporal or if it's eternal. But that young person hasn't had time yet to think about that in most cases. And that really bothers me because they, they aren't going to get to have that, that joy, that pleasure of knowing that. So I struggle with that sometimes. It hurts a lot. And then the little ones that have developed cancer or are going through a very serious illness, they're the ones that have the relationship. Once they know that they're dying, they become the person in the family that strengthens the family because of their, their relationship with God. They, it's amazing. They're just, they're just little, little angels of God and helping their family to get through what it is they're going to have to go through without them. So...
That's interesting that, so where is it in, like you were, because before you were talking about people who are probably in their, maybe teens or early twenties that were, but, but when they were younger, they got it. They get to be that age, they don't. Until, and they don't...
In their 40s, usually, yeah. Unless they're an exceptional person. And, and there are those.
Sure, absolutely.
But I'm just talking about the average.
So if, if you look there at the top of page 16, because it kind of plays into what Pat was just saying, it says, "If, if you need to develop a more eternal perspective on life, how do you go about doing it? Do you just have to live life? Or is there something that we, can we be proactive in developing a more eternal perspective? Or is it just something you've got to live? You've got to live life and figure it out?"
I think it, it begins with the people that you, that God places in your life. I truly believe that.
So what if, so that, is that, that's not being proactive, but all that's just waiting for God, being receptive to the people in your life?
You're searching. I think people are searching. But I think the right, the right person has to be, I mean, you walk in paths of a lot of people. And like we said, we've talked earlier, is that in other classes, you know, you recognize when someone is, life is different than yours. And you have the desire to know what it is that's different about them. And why is it that it's different about them? And then after you learn, it's like, oh, I want to do this, or I want to learn this, or I want to find that joy that they have that I don't have. And so...
So if I were to boil down what she was saying, you guys, correct me if I'm not articulating this correctly, pay attention to the people that you see around you, that you perceive that they get it. And then maybe ask why. Why, why do you get it? Why, why do you seem different than me or most people or whatever?
Or what makes you so happy?
What makes you happy?
What brings you joy?
Yeah.
I would think that it has something to do with experience, not as much as age, though. Like, and through, through the experiences of others, being with serving others, then you would be able to feel the same things that they feel if they suffered a loss, if they suffer great happiness, if they're, if there are any of the emotions that they feel. If you're able to entune yourself with that emotion, then you have that experience as well. And you have that gain, that next step towards your, your closeness with God.
So being empathetic?
Empathetic. And, because then it would not necessarily have to be that you have to walk through life and get to your 70s before you have a true appreciation, an actual appreciation in each and every moment that you're gathering from those around you.
Very good.
Good. What else? What else can we do?
No, Craig, I, and I don't intend to project this on anybody else in this room besides Shannon and myself. And I'll speak for her, which I, which I might pay for later. But one of the realizations that I think we both come to, or at least I would say I have, is that as a parent, I haven't done the, I haven't put the energy and the effort into teaching my four children to have that relationship. You know, I mean, I, I teach my children so many things. And I spend so much time focused on that, you know, teaching my daughter to change the oil in the car, like something just, right?
That's important stuff, right?
A lot of energy there. But when was the last time I asked my son, instead of, how's school, how's work, how's your relationship with your girlfriend, how's the relationship with God? You know, those, those aren't conversations that we typically have.
Why don't, why don't...
In our home, right. And, and again, I'm not projecting anyone else, but I know that I didn't grow up with it. I certainly haven't raised my family, even though I, I'm confident they look at me and go, I want to be like that guy.
Yeah.
You know? But not because they know, because we have those conversations in the house. And they certainly see faith at our home. They see it every day. But we don't have that, we don't have that conversation. And it's something that Shannon and I have been talking about quite a bit. And, you know, I was actually a little tardy tonight because our 22-year-old, who's now living at home, he's in college, but he's going through an internship and it's virtual. So he came upstairs and he was having dinner with me as I got home late from work. And he asked about what we were doing tonight. So I started talking to him about it. And he, you know, right away, just engaged. And we started talking about faith and religion and church and how other people view it. And, you know, so I, I think that's a, for me anyway, that's a piece where, as a parent, I think if we want that 22-year-old, that 21-year-old to, to be in a better place, I think we as parents need to do a better job of, of not just taking our children to church.
Yeah.
But actually demonstrating that, having that open, open conversation.
Excellent. Well, yeah, and, yeah, good job. I, I wish you'd stayed home and talked to him, right?
Well, I think I'm better equipped to now, actually.
Oh, good, there we go.
Bring him with you.
Well, we had that conversation as well.
Did you? Oh, good.
It's, it's been, it's been interesting because we, it's, his two boys from previous marriage went to, through Catholic school based on their mother's wishes. And then, we are not Catholic. And then, well, obviously Heather, I've had way more, way more contact with her. And her and I share our faith. She's our only kid that we have every day because we've had a blended family. And so trying to work around the wishes of another parent, which are totally different from our faith in a lot of ways, and not, not wanting to step on toes, all of that stuff has made it difficult. But we are on the path to starting some major conversations in the very near future. And that's something I feel very strongly about. And I have a lot of guilt about it because I, we have done a great job when it comes to three of our kids. But we're gonna, we're gonna open up those. And actually, if you guys all pray about that, I would appreciate it more than you would know. Just as we open up this dialogue with our three boys that are 18, 19 to 22, I would covet your prayers.
Well, in that short testimony time that the two of them just shared, they gave us all a beautiful perspective on how to, to change from temporal to eternal. Philly started out by saying, I've done a real good job of teaching my kids how to change oil and, and balance checkbook and all that stuff, right? So the switch between temporal and eternal is just what you said, having those conversations. The most important conversation I could ever have with, with my kids or with my, with my coworker or with whoever that you're in relationship with, is that God relationship. And I'm not talking about flumping them over the head. Don't do that. I'm talking about loving them enough, being, wanting to know what's going on in their life so that when you do start talking about God, they're saying, the reason why he's asking me about that is because he loves me. Not because he's trying to shove something down my throat, right? So that's how you make those eternal. And then you did, Shannon just said, how do you make, go from temporal to eternal? He said, I'm praying about it. I'm, I'm, see, the, the next one down, if you look at number four, we're just about out of time, but I want, it, it makes the point there in, 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 number four on page 16. It says, "If, if you want to live a life that is rich towards God, the most important thing is to give Him the full devotion of your life." See, ultimately, that's it, right there. If you want to go from temporal to eternal, make Jesus the most important thing in your life. More important than your children, more important than your job, more... And I'm not talking about church when I say that, by the way. So listen to, listen to me. I'm talking about Jesus. Because I've known a lot, and I'm guilty of this, or is why I say that, is you can make church way more important than it is too. But you can never make Jesus more important than He ought to be. Never. So understand what I'm saying. May be fully devoted in everything that you are, being in love with Jesus. And when you're in love with Jesus, it goes right back to what Pat was saying, then when you, when you're in love with Jesus, it'll be all about, you will want to serve others. You will want to, what can I do to, to help them fall in love with Jesus? Because you don't need to indoctrinate them, you don't need to, you just need to help, what can I, Jesus, show me how to love them so that they'll love you. That's the, that's the key relationship. Yeah. Any last words, you guys?
Thank you.
Great sharing tonight. Thank you. I appreciate it. Pat, would you pose a prayer?
Sure. Gracious God, we thank you for this opportunity to be together this evening. We are so grateful to, to know that we can come to a place that is going to provide us leadership and understanding of what it is God's will is for our lives. How important it is to have Jesus as our, as our best friend and a loving relationship that, that nurtures everything that we come in contact with in this life. And we pray, oh Lord, that your light shines through us, that people will recognize that because of that love that we share with you, that our lives are different. Because it makes a difference as to whom we are and how we treat other people. So I pray that love and kindness and compassion and, and the joy of, of love will be felt by all who know you, oh Lord. And those that don't and want to know you, that we could provide a path that will lead them in that direction. So I pray, oh Lord, that you take us all home safely and that we would return hopefully on Sunday, and if not, for sure, next Wednesday night, as we continue to study this, this great book of John Markburg's, that is opening our eyes to what is and what isn't the right things to do in our lives, with the games we're playing. I pray this in your name, oh Lord.
Amen. Thanks, guys. Amen. Thanks, guys.